You want to speak on it now?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. President. Well, this has been a long road to this item before us. I seek to amend it because it has moved quite quickly in the last few weeks. I realize it was stalled for a couple of months, if you will. Let us not forget how we got here. It was not the children nor the teachers in Milwaukee Public Schools that necessarily asked for these 25 taxpayer-funded Milwaukee Police Department officers. It was the idea of the Republicans who control the state legislature who believe that they know what's best for the city of Milwaukee and our children. While it is law, it certainly is law. And there's certainly a lot of things going on in this world right now, and laws that are being made, and orders, and executive orders, whether it be from Washington DC or Madison, right here in the state of Wisconsin. We've seen some of them challenged, overturned, we've paused a pause, and we've been through a lot. I just have more questions than answers at this time, Mr. President. I've asked them in committee yesterday, it was about 24 hours ago, a little less. Where are these 25 officers coming from? The neighborhoods? They're not 25 new officers, they're coming from our existing police force. Where is the $1.5 million coming from? While it's split with Milwaukee Public Schools, I would offer to you that some of that could go to prevent some of these issues from even happening. What about more libraries? What about more art? What about more music? What about the amendment that I put forward to at least invest the money in things to program our youth? Like Milwaukee Recreation, like the Twilight Hours. Those are areas where people can participate in a positive way. What is the goal of the expanded police interactions with our Milwaukee Public School children? What are the metrics that'll be used? Will more students end up being arrested? Will there be fewer calls for service? And why doesn't this apply to every school in the city of Milwaukee? Why just Milwaukee Public Schools? There's other schools, there's hundreds of other schools, if it's such a great idea. You know, I've thought long and hard about this, and I've thought about the feeling that I feel. And I do feel bullied. I feel bullied from Washington DC at times, and I feel bullied from Madison in Wisconsin. I do think that while this case has been in front of the judge, everyone's trying to do the best that they can, I worry mostly about the training. We're now on a track where there'll be expedited training of 40 hours. I haven't had a chance, I haven't received the curriculum yet, but we've got a really diverse body of students in these Milwaukee Public Schools, of all needs and all abilities, some you can see, some you can't see. And I'm just not sure how this will make families and children feel safer. I think it's short-sighted, and I think it comes with a lot of cost in future years, and I would much rather see the investment in preventative programming that invests in our children. I am worried about the outcome. The research is very, very telling on this. When you look at other cities, it's been mixed. Some has resulted in more arrests. That stays on a child's record for many, many years. So I am really concerned about this proposal, and one way that I seek to improve it is with this amendment, and I do move adoption of the amendment, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Chair recognizes, is that it, Alderwoman?
Just for now.
Chair recognizes Alderman Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be voting against this amendment for various reasons. I do respect my colleague for her hard work and her passion in regards to MPS, but we still have to face the reality that they took over a year to follow state law that was signed by our Democratic governor, Tony Evers, back in 2023. 3,700 calls, and they can be challenged however you want to do it, but according to Milwaukee Police records, 3,700 calls to Milwaukee Public Schools has been made for calls for actions at MPS. It's alarming, and I think the teachers need help. I do respect the law. While I voted against the ramifications of Act 12, which included these 25, you know, whether they was going to be on there or not, those were some concerns that I had against when I voted against this, but several of my colleagues on this council voted for it. So you knew what you were getting into when you voted for it, regardless whether it was saving the city or not. So I just really want to get that out there. For this, I really don't understand the purpose of this amendment. So we basically will be giving MPS back the money that they're paying for their SROs based on the court, based on Judge Borowski's ruling, when they can actually add money from their Recreation Department because they're in the midst of a $35 million project for a new northside community center that's going to be held in the second district. So I just really don't understand, and I really urge my colleagues to vote against this amendment. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Spiker.
Just a point of information, Mr. President. So is this one of those situations where if the sub passes, there's no reclaiming the original? Or not the sub passes, but if we rule to have the sub before us?
This is not a substitute. It's an amendment.
So it's just a simple amendment?
Yeah. If you, if you don't agree with this amendment, you just vote it down. If not, it becomes part of the file.
Yeah, and I guess speaking on the amendment, then, this is worth a fuller discussion. I guess I'm not prepared at this time to say one way or another where I stand on this. Might be worthy, might not be, but would like to have a fuller discussion of it at committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Brigellis.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's been said just now, this has been a long road for the memorandum of understanding, but this is a very short, brisk walk to the amendment. Alderman Chambers has already introduced a file to address revenue coming from MPS this year. We have 50 days left in this school year, and then half of a school year fall of revenue, somewhere around $600,000, give or take, depending on estimate you look at. That is a significant sum of money that should be discussed in committee, and not just one good idea should be considered, but I suspect there might be 14 or 13 other good ideas. We should do that in committee, and I will oppose the amendment.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I am trying to just get some clarity when we use the term "unanticipated revenue." Are we referencing what MPS portion would be?
Yes.
But is that considered revenue when they're paying for a service?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Chair recognizes Alderman Baumann.
Yeah, I'm wondering what the actual effect of this amendment would be. Doesn't actually appropriate anything, just says it's our intent, which it would have to be other legislation later on actually moving money.
You're correct.
Correct?
You're correct.
So I guess I'm not...
Yeah, it hasn't even been recognized yet, so...
But the point of this is, other than, well, it's that.
Okay, thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Stamper.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just so I know what's going on, there is money, extra money being produced or expected? Is there money, extra money being expected?
Yes, from MPS for their half of the resource officers.
Okay. After, is there supposed to be a surplus after the officers are paid for?
I wouldn't say surplus, but it's their portion of paying for the officers who have already been budgeted for 2025.
I don't, is it, so they're paying over? They're going to pay over than what is expected, what the officers call?
No, they're just going to pay their chef, because their half, because they're already paid for for 2025. So we take the 25 officers, school resource officers, MPS pays their half from the MOU that's in the file, and then when we get it, I think there's a process that it will be recognized, as you heard from other members, it'll go to committee, there's two files already been introduced, and then there's a process that way. The Alderwoman was doing it now.
I get ahead of it, okay, all right, got it, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Alderman Baumann.
Good.
Okay. Chair recognizes Alderman Spiker.
Super briefly, yeah, as Alderman Baumann pointed out, this would just be an expression of our intention, it wouldn't be the allocation of any funds, but of course, that happens in budgeting all the time where we say, we intend to do this, and then later it's brought up when there is the decision to make the funds. Well, we already accepted this, so I think if we don't, aren't sure about the allocation at this point, it'd probably be wise to hold off on our intentions, but that's just my opinion and what will drive my vote, so thank you.
Okay. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dmitrievich.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is this MOU appropriating, isn't it appropriating at least our half? I mean, it's, this is, there is a price tag to this. $1.5 million, half of it is ours, and I want to make sure for the public that's watching this, these are not new officers. These will be officers leaving the beat on the street to be inside of schools. And, Mr. President, I've heard time and time again during this entire debate, mostly from Madison, about what teachers in the classrooms are asking for. Are teachers asking for armed police officers? I've heard the teachers asking for art, music, paraprofessionals, supplies, more after-school activities. I think that's what I've heard. But I would like to answer my question is, why this is appropriate today, if you so choose? Is this that this is an MOU that's implicating us, does anyone even know the end date of this? How long will this MOU last? What if it doesn't work out? What if arrests go up 50%? I mean, this is implicating us to years and years of money. So this is a proper discussion for money. Mr. Chair and Mr. Clerk, could I please get an answer to how much money, if we had approved this MOU today, what is the cost to taxpayers? Because there's a fiscal note, right?
Not fiscal note.
Oh.
Okay.
It's the 1-5, and then split between MPS and the city.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, what I'm saying is that there is a financial component to this, and what I'm asking for people to consider, and it wasn't my choice this all be in front of us today, but this is Milwaukee Recreation Department. It's an award-winning, citywide program. Many of the slots are always filled up. It's directly related to the children that may feel the impact of this memorandum of understanding. You know, 1 in 5 children approximately in the city of Milwaukee Public Schools has a disability, visible or not. And some of the Recreation Department activities are very inclusive. It's all the way from swim lessons to gymnastics, to, one of the things that I highlighted in the words is the Twilight Hours, they're nighttime. You can go roller skating in a high school down the street from you. I'm trying to provide some positive out of what I think is a challenging situation. I get that we need more time, but today is the day that we're implicating ourselves to this MOU and these funds, and I thought it was a great time to at least try to make an investment in those funds for 2025. I think we can have a positive. I mean, what would it look like in the city if we had an extra investment to prevent the need of these officers even being called? That is what I would like, and I ask you from the bottom of my heart today, that we look at at least those funds, those couple hundred thousand dollars of unanticipated revenue in 2025. Let's send a message. Let's come together and send a message to Madison and those teachers and those parents and those children, that we're also making an investment simultaneously in after-school programming, in recreation, in sports, and positive things. You know, lastly, Mr. President, I'm sick and tired, and it's not from this chamber in particular, but these external forces that want to just keep beating up on Milwaukee Public Schools. Here we are talking about officers when we've got people being poisoned with lead. We've got, you know, teachers that don't have enough resources, we've got kids that are unhoused, coming to school and hungry. We're taking our eye off the prize, and people want to play the blame game. This is one city with one set of children, these are our children, and I believe in them and I want to invest in them. And I don't know that the number one investment is in armed police officers. I want them to succeed and give them the best shot possible. So I think today is the day to make an additional investment. And honestly, I am tired of this negative view, and this just further adds to it as if the schools are unsafe. There's so many positive stories that come out of Milwaukee Public Schools, and I hope we would spend the same time telling those stories, too. I spent this weekend at a chess tournament where I saw kids for eight hours sitting there, Milwaukee Public School students, and just dedicating their time. Those are the type of activities that I want to invest in. Those are the stories that aren't making the headline, and I'm not going to let people from Madison erase those stories. They're very important, and it's important to a city that succeeds. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. President. To my colleague's point, you know, I think you see a room full of success stories from Milwaukee Public Schools, myself included. You know, Milwaukee Public Schools has made us, created us to become the men and women that we, that we are today. But I'm here to state the facts. You know, you bring up in your speech that teachers are asking for arts, after-school programs, you know, music, things of nature. They passed two referendums in 2020 for $87 million, and 2024 for $252 million, saying the exact same thing. And within that same timeframe, they withdrew their contract, you know, for the school resource officers, that was their, right now, which in my opinion, in my opinion alone, caused the attention to be raised up in Madison for that. From what I heard, it was supposed to be more officers, but they settled on the 25. You know, and in addition to that, they mismanaged funds. Are we just not going to sit here and act like that just didn't happen? To where, where, they just selected a new superintendent due to what transpired from everything? And the news came out after the referendum passed of the fiscal challenges that they had. So not only, we weren't the only person, we had fiscal challenges that, you know, we resolved, or hopefully getting near resolved, but they had fiscal challenges, too, that they decided to hide in order to let the referendum pass. Because I have residents that come through my town halls and to my forums and to my offices pissed about having to pay increased taxes on being misled. And while I support MPS, I went to go talk to the same group of students that you talked to, Alderwoman Dmitrievich. I went to go support them, I donated money, I do everything that I can to empower my public school that I graduated from, within your district, Bayview High School, and I'm going to continue to do that. But the facts are the facts, and this is where we're at. There's no fiscal note within the referendum, they have money to do the recreation, and I think the file that I'm going to introduce, and I have out, is going to tie in everything, is going to help the schools, going to help the MPS school system and the neighbors that are surrounding those school buildings with a safe path to school. Because we need more traffic helmet measures, we need more increased lightning, I have kids that drive cars recklessly to where Marshall got to put concrete steps around the schools. Madison High School, concrete steps around the school because kids are driving on the sidewalk and the grass. Now, I don't think the police intention, the police is going to be fully inside the school, they may be around the buildings or anything like that, but my residents want them there. My residents need them there. They ask for it continuously. I literally just had a town hall on February 22nd where I had 30 residents, and the first thing they talked about is when the police are coming back into the schools. They've been, they're a year overdue. And again, whether I agree with it or not, because I didn't agree with the totality of the entire Act 12, including the school resource officers, I feel like MPS could have devised a plan to make it more safer, but yet they didn't. And this is the fact that we have, that we have right now. So right now, we're discussing a contract that I think, you know, City Attorney Goiki and his team has done a fantastic job. I know the president, I know Alderman Spiker was a part of those negotiations and contracts, and we got to the point because, you know, they felt they didn't need to pay the bills. So I just, I'm a little perplexed at the, I guess, the, the hesitation to allow them to come in, and I feel like if, you know, let's follow the law, and if it's something that need to get addressed, then we'll go and address it as accordingly as needed. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Cox.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier, the question was asked about what's the real cost? If we're honest, I think what Act 12 did put us in this position not just for one year. It put us in this position until they say we're not in this position. So the truth is, the real cost is whatever 25 officers cost every year until they say we don't have to do this anymore, and for the amount of days of the year that they will be in the MPS schools. If I'm not mistaken, like, that's the real cost. So it will be millions of dollars likely over the years. The decision about what to do with the revenue, though, I think is a separate conversation. But even from the conversation here today, I think many members have ideas about what could happen, and I think that we collectively should discuss that and make that decision. I do not think it should be included in today's vote. You know, I'm a product of MPS, too, proud Riverside graduate, trust MPS so much, my children go through MPS as well. This weekend, I spent time at King for the music competition that they had, for my daughter competing in singing. So I appreciate all the extra stuff, too. I don't, but I, but I see these issues as separate insofar as our decision-making about this MOU. Here today, I give credit to the City Attorney's Office as well, and a team of folks from the city, as well as MPS who finally came together and came up with the agreement. I will say, though, that I am still left with many questions as well, to still have the request out for the curriculum, that the training will be, and the training is clearly, is clearly important to me because what I don't want is us to be putting officers in and around these schools and incidents occur that cause further liability for us as a city and lawsuits as a city. So that training, which is required in Act 12, is critically important, and we did request a copy of the curriculum, and hopefully we'll see it soon, but I don't like the fact that I haven't seen it to this point. It does feel like the training is a little bit rushed, I'll just be honest about that. And I think there are a lot of unanswered questions, like what are the measurables? What will the results ultimately be? And how do we make sure that for all intents and purposes, the very reasons that MPS took officers out of the school aren't replicated here? That the good, the safety that people want to see with the officers in the school actually happens? And at this moment, we don't even know which schools they're going to be in. There are so many unanswered questions as it relates to this mandate from the state. And I'll be honest, too, I don't even think it should have ever been a part of Act 12. What does this have to do with us getting a 2% tax? I didn't support that tax, and on the record, at the appropriate time, I'm not supporting the MOU, not because I don't respect the work that's been done to this point, because I just don't respect the unfunded mandate given to us by the state, and because of so many unanswered questions as it relates to the officers in the school. My hope is that the training is stellar. My hope is that the officers are great. My hope is that they're put in the schools that are most needed and that they truly help to keep our children safe. I think time will tell, but I do not have enough information at this time to believe that to be true. So I, at the appropriate time, want to be a note for the overall MOU and for this amendment. I just think it's a separate decision to talk about the revenue, so I will be a note for that as well.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Samaripa.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I do want to thank Alderwoman Dmitrievich for her remarks. She's very passionate on this issue, but I also want to credit Alderman Chambers for his remarks, and it's notable to mention, I think, that, you know, they're both products of MPS. In fact, they both graduated from, they're both proud Bayview Red Cats, and they don't hesitate to remind us of that. And I appreciate their leadership on this issue. It's certainly been a difficult one for all of us, I know. But specific to today's amendment, and I did mention this just now to the Alderwoman, I can't support this amendment. I do want to see that the, I want to wait and see when and if any dollars received from MPS is recognized by Comptroller Christensen, and I would like to make our recommendations through committee for any potential revenue. And I'm not saying, I certainly would consider Milwaukee Recreation, they do fine work, certainly at Burnham Park in my district, but I know there's been many other good programs mentioned, like Safe Routes to School and other things. And so I really would prefer to have this go through our traditional committee process, which is why I won't be supporting today's amendment. But again, want to thank the perspective that was shared by so many of our colleagues in particular, Alderwoman Dmitrievich and Alderman Chambers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Spiker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, it was mentioned the fiscal costs associated with the MOU. The MOU would require that we deploy 25 of our officers in and around this target list of schools. They've been budgeted for, for this year already. However, as Alder Dmitrievich pointed out, there is a non-fiscal cost, which is officers would be taken off of their normal patrol and segmented to the schools. But there is a financial fiscal cost with not passing the MOU today, which is, we're under a court order, this is state law, so the horse has left the barn in a way, and it'll be $1,000 a day for the pleasure of not complying with Judge Borowski's orders. So there is a cost as well, regardless of what we want to say about the merits. So I think the vote on that item is clear with that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dmitrievich.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I really appreciate the latitude that my colleagues have given me on this issue. It's pretty clear to me that while there's a lot of support for Milwaukee Recreation and positive outcomes for youth, I hope that I will get another turn to make this point at committee. I'm sorry, but if we think that we're going to use this funding and put it back into the police department, I'm not going to support that. But I really am saying this as strongly as I can, that I want to have a much more robust discussion at committee on where that funding goes, and I want to set the table, and I feel like I've been allowed to do that today, that I really do think it should go to prevention. Like, what's missing in this whole conversation is prevention. We have other work to do. Let's make it so that those officers actually are not needed, so that the teachers have what they need and that the children have what they need. So we don't have those calls for services in or outside, many of those calls also came from outside. So I hear my colleagues, I want to be a good listener, I'm going to withdraw my amendment, Mr. President, and I will introduce it as a substitute to the file that was discussed. So I will make a case for it at the committee, but at this time, I will withdraw it, and at the same time, I will join Alderwoman Cogs in objecting to this MOU. And I ask for a roll call on it.
Okay, so Alderwoman Dmitrievich withdrew her motion. Chair recognizes Alderman Brigellis.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the MOU itself, I, too, have heard from my constituents about this. Some are concerned about having police in schools, but most want to ensure that our schools are safe. We heard from, we heard over 3,000 calls for service schools, the Journal reported 1,266 calls for service in the last year during school hours. Police are already in our schools, but I think it's important that we have dedicated, specialized, trained school resource officers in schools instead of whoever happens to be nearby on patrol under the call for service. SROs enhance... SROs enhance school safety. A well-trained officer is not just a deterrent to violence, they're a first responder in an emergency, whether it's medical, or a fight, or an outside threat. Their presence in schools ensures that help is available within seconds, not minutes. In a crisis, that can mean difference between life and death. But SROs aren't just law enforcement officers, they're mentors, role models, educators in schools. Many students, especially those from difficult home situations, benefit from having a trusted adult in their lives. A trained SRO will build relationships with students, helping them to break down barriers that, between young people and law enforcement. They teach important life skills like conflict resolution, responsible decision-making, and the dangers of substance abuse. SROs can help prevent crime before it happens. By being actively involved in the school community, they recognize the early warning signs of bullying, mental health struggles, and gang recruitment. Instead of waiting until something goes wrong and showing up after the fact, they intervene early, offering guidance, support, and when necessary, referrals to the right services. Having a trained SRO in our schools is not about turning schools into police stations. It's about creating a safe, supportive environment where students can focus on learning and growing without fear. The right officer with the right training is not just an asset to school security, they're an investment in our children's future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we will take separate action. We'll do a roll call on item forty-four, file two-four-one-seven-zero-seven. With a clerk, please call the roll.
On adoption, Alderman Pratt. Chambers.
Aye.
Baumann.
Aye.
Westmoreland.
Aye.
Cogs.
No.
Jackson.
Zamaripa.
Aye.
Taylor.
No.
Moore.
Aye.
Brigellis.
Aye.
Spiker.
Aye.
Dmitrievich.
No.
Stamper.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Ten ayes, four noes.
Ten ayes, four noes, the file passes. Is there any further discussion of the committee report? Any further discussion of the rest of the report? Hearing none, Alderman Jackson moves for adoption of the recommendations of Judiciary and Legislation Committee. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Pratt.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Baumann.
Aye.
Westmoreland.
Aye.
Cogs.
Aye.
Jackson.
Zamaripa.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Brigellis.
Aye.
Spiker.
Aye.
Dmitrievich.
Aye.
Stamper.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes, the committee report is adopted. Alderman Scott Spiker will not present the report of the Public Health and Safety Committee.
Item fifty-eight, a substitute ordinance relating to common council approval for any appointee to the position of office of Community Wellness and Safety Director. The committee recommends adoption of fifty-nine, substitute resolution relating to the acceptance of funding of the twenty-twenty-five STD infertility prevention grant from the State of Wisconsin Department of Health Services. Sixty, substitute resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Health to negotiate and enter into lease and license agreements for the use of spaces, rather, spaces at City of Milwaukee Health Centers. Sixty-one, resolution relating to the acceptance and funding of a cops anti-heroin grant. The committee recommends placing on file the items sixty-two, communication from the Milwaukee Police Department relating to its standard operating procedures for the handling of the remains of persons killed by police officers, as well as requirements relating to the assistance of those shot by police officers. Sixty-three, communication from the Milwaukee Department of Public Works Parking Enforcement relating to a recent incident in which the body of a deceased individual was found in a towed vehicle. Sixty-four, resolution directing the Office of the Controller to conduct an independent audit of Health Department expenditures. Sixty-five, communication relating to the Fire Department, to the Fire and Police Commission, twenty-twenty-four audit report on Milwaukee Police Department policies, procedures, and practices to lessen overtime. Sixty-six, communication from the Fire and Police Commission relating to standard operating procedures. And sixty-seven, communication from the Milwaukee Police Department, the Legislative Affairs Division, and Intergovernmental Relation Division relating to the city's impounding of vehicles whose operators were cited for reckless driving.
Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. For item number fifty-eight, two-four-one-six-six-four, I would like to make a motion and move to return to committee.
Okay, the motion by Alderman Moore is to return item number fifty-eight, two-four-one-six-six-four. Are there any objections to that motion? Hearing none, so ordered. Is there any further discussion of the committee report? Hearing none, Alderman Spiker moves for adoption and recommendations of the Public Health and Safety Committee. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Pratt.
Aye.
Chambers. Baumann.
Aye.
Westmoreland.
Aye.
Cogs.
Aye.
Jackson. Zamaripa.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Moore. Aye. Brigellis.
Aye.
Spiker.
Aye.
Dmitrievich. Stamper.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes, committee report is adopted. Alderman Robert Baumann will not present the report of the zoning neighborhoods of.